... June 26, 2017, the work session to order. And Madam Clerk, would you read the, uh, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody? I know he's right there.
Mr. Moody, say yes.
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Rowe?
Here.
And the purpose of the nice meeting is to interview candidates for the Planning Commission, and so this qualifies for a closed meeting. And the Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2, 3711, A.1, for the purpose of discussion, consideration, and interviews of potential candidates for appointment to boards and commissions.
Second. Okay, we have a motion that's been duly seconded. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Rowe?
Yes, and we are in closed session. I'll ask everybody. I'm calling the meeting of the City Council back in session. We had started our meeting at 5:00, and we've had our roll call, and we now have a joint meeting with the Portsmouth Development Housing Authority. And because this is a public meeting for you all, I'll give the Chairman an opportunity to go through the necessary things to call your meeting to order and to do your roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Washington?
Present.
Commissioner Chapman?
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Alondi?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
And myself, I'm present.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for taking time out of your summer schedule to meet with us jointly. We decided that it would be better to meet with the Housing Authority, the Economic Development Authority, the School Board, and the Planning Commission individually. Council in the past used to have one mass meeting once or twice a year. And this gives us a chance to get to know each other better, and it's a better setting for us to talk about the city and the city's future. And having said that, there's no agenda that we have tonight, and I'll open it up to Chairman Smith to give comments.
It's a pleasure to meet with you all, and I just want to say this right here. We have some accomplishments and highlights in the past year since we've come aboard. And for some of you that don't know, the PRHA was created in 1938 with the first housing authority in the state of Virginia, which I believe is a huge thing for our city.
Yes.
The authority hired an in-house legal counsel in January, Miss Karen James. Also, extensive national search for Executive Director Edward L. Bland, who will start his position as a new executive director on July 20th, 2017. And development-wise, Dale's Home began Phase 1 of the Rental Assistance Demonstration, RAD program, conversion rehabilitation. 146 of 296 affordable housing units with the Dale's Home community, approximately 37% is complete. Phase 2 of the rehabilitation, Dale's Home, 150 units, is anticipated to begin at the year's end. And then we also have a signed letter of intent, LOI, with the Hutton Team LLC for the development of Seaboard Commons, which is located by, uh, right there by Seaboard Square, right across from the Kroger marketplace. And finance-wise, we have a clean audit opinions for every fiscal year since 2007. That's beautiful. Anticipated paying real estate taxes, payments to the city are forecast to be $950,402 for 2018. Then also on the public housing front, 611 public housing, public and assisted housing units. The agent has received an overall 92, excuse me, an overall score of 92 on the public housing assessment, PHAS. Then also, we have a designated high performer by the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
You said you had some.
We have, uh, we have 1,611 public housing, public and assisted housing units. Thank you, Doctor. And then also for our Housing Choice Voucher, Section 8 program, approximately 1,700 housing choice voucher participants, increased our number of assisted families by approximately 200 with the HCV. Received an increment for 10 Veterans Administrative Support Housing vouchers within the past four years, and received an increase of five vouchers last year, making a total of 15 BASH vouchers. All have been issued and leased. Completed issuance of vouchers to all eligible applicants from 2008 waitlists, opened the waitlist in July 2016, and accepted 6,800 applications. High performer for Section 8 Management Assessment, Assessment Program for the past four years. And also, some more good news, the authority received an Award of Merit from the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials for the Summer Scholars Program. PRHA will be honored at the Narrow Conference in July. That's my update, sir.
It might be good to introduce ourselves, since this is the first time that we have met together. And so, how about if we start on council, and then I'll turn it over to you so you can introduce the Commissioners? We'll start with Elizabeth.
I'm Elizabeth Simmons. I'm a Portsmouth native. I'm in my fourth term on the council in my day job in a travel agency that will be 30 years old in February.
I'm Bill Moody, Portsmouth native, in the middle of my fifth term on City Council, and currently employed with Select Recycling and Waste Company in Chesapeake.
Lisa Lucas Burke, born and raised Portsmouth, was elected in November 2016. This is my sixth month. In my day job, I'm an Executive Director for Lucas Lodge. We provide services to adults with developmental disabilities. I'm liaison to your board, PRHA, proud, also liaison to the Planning Commission and the School Board.
I'm Page Chair, current Sheriff and Vice Mayor, in my second term on council, and my regular job is I oversee the medical budget for 42 Coast Guard clinics.
Nathan Clark, I was born and raised here in the city of Portsmouth, been here my whole life. Current job is, I'm still working within the field of public safety. I'm in my 29th year. I was just elected in November, took office in January, so I'm only six months in.
Mark Whitaker, this is my first term, City Council, lifelong resident of Portsmouth.
And John Rowe, this is my hometown. And Davey.
Mr. Alondi?
Yeah, Bruce Alondi, pretty much a nonprofit advocate, lifelong member of Portsmouth. On the Portsmouth Redevelopment Housing Authority, the two areas I've, that I've got focus on is the finances and digging in there, and as Chairman Smith said, it's fantastic. The financials look really good. And then secondly, the Housing Committee and working with these vouchers and these public housing that we have, so thank you.
I'm Rita Roberts. I'm, was born in Portsmouth, raised in Portsmouth and Chesapeake, and have been a Portsmouth resident since 2012. In my day job, I'm a computer audit software trainer and consultant, working all over the country. And I look forward to working with PRHA and developing Portsmouth.
I'm Sonya Chapman. I was appointed to the PRHA in February of this year. It's an honor to serve. I am a resident of Portsmouth, Virginia, have been for about 20 years. I, my daytime job, I'm the Administrative Assistant in the Finance and Administrative Department at Title Water Youth Services Commission, which is a contractor of the Department of Juvenile Justice, and I look forward to serving continuously with you guys.
I'm Leslie Harris, born and raised in Portsmouth, retired civil service employee, and First Vice Commander of American Legion.
I'm Reverend Ruben Washington, Reverend Dr. Ruben Washington. I'm a native of Portsmouth, Virginia, retired Air Force Chaplain. I work part-time in mediation, which I learned after retiring from the Department of Veteran Affairs, counseling and mediation. Lived in Portsmouth for the past 17, 18 years now. Mayor Hollis was mayor when I came in, and it's been an absolute delight. I tell everyone, even though I've been living in Portsmouth for 18 years, my family has a long history of living in Portsmouth for over 50 years. Most of my siblings have worked at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, but I went and joined the United States Air Force. They hold that against me.
We might have them outnumbered.
I'm not going to say it, Bill.
Don't you say it.
But it is a distinct honor and privilege to be serving with my colleagues and on the PRHA Board, and I'm learning as I go.
Davey Smith III, Chairman of the Board here, born and raised Portsmouth, Portsmouth, Virginia, and this moment is just so real to me right now, because I grew up in Jeffrey Wilson and public housing. And now to be the Chairman of the Board, it's humbling, and I know we have a lot of work to do and a lot of work to get done. And I look forward to continue to work with you all, your council members, mayor, city manager, everybody, and it's humbling. You know, I've served before, you know, you before as the Chairman of the Planning Commission. Now to serve here on this board is humbling. And myself, my background, I worked in social work for a while, and now I'm a young entrepreneur. And I look forward to serving.
Good. Well, we really appreciate your service. This is volunteer work for all of you, and your time is your scariest resource, and the fact that you take time to serve on an important board like this board that has such an impact on people's lives and their future, and on the future of our community. I can't personally thank you enough for giving us your scarce resource, your time. And I'm sure that that's a sentiment that we all express here on council. With that...
Could I introduce, as a liaison?
Yeah.
I did want to recognize the interim Executive Director, Lisa Winston, and she's doing a great job.
Thank you.
Would you want to introduce any of the other staff that are here?
Yes, I will. I have Carol Thomas. She is our Director of Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher. Scott Potts, he's the Director of Finance.
Good evening.
Bazania Jenkins, she is our Director of Housing Management. Brian Donahue, he's our Director of Development.
Good evening.
Karen James is our in-house counsel.
Good evening.
And Dolores Adams, she's our Director of Procurement and Resident Services.
Doing that, it's important for us to know who...
Yes.
Who are the professionals that do this every day, get up every morning thinking about Portsmouth and thinking about making it better. With that, let's start an informal conversation. Chairman Smith, thank you for that overview of what's happened and reminding us of the long legacy that this Housing Authority has had in the state of Virginia. Any comments, any discussions?
Question?
Sure.
Can you tell me a little bit about the timeline on the rebuild at Lincoln Park?
We're actually putting in the application now for tax credits to begin the demolition and rehab. We expect probably beginning of the year, we will be looking towards demolition. And I would think that process will probably take anywhere from about a year, 18 months to do so.
But it's going to go in phases?
Phases, yes. It will be in phases, yes.
But the result is a complete demolition and rebuild?
Yes.
Knowing that the agency is as old as it is, you know, we have three pretty dated properties, Dale Homes, Lincoln Homes, and Effingham, and the agency has really got the strategic plan in place to make those things really look great. Get a chance to look out at Swanson, it really is looking nice, the rehab out there. And Dale, it's like night and day between the new sections and the old sections. So, the professionals that are sitting in the back of the room have really come together to make that happen. Just want to talk a second, too, about the Housing Choice Voucher. We say we're at 1,700. We're looking to go to 1,900 here soon, and that's, that is a tremendous jump. So, we are, we are really working closely with HUD to make sure, hey, if they've got the money, we want it. We want to put people in affordable housing so they can have a better life here in Portsmouth.
Now, during the demolition of the Lincoln Park, where would those residents be so that everyone in the room will know?
They will be relocated to other public housing units, or they may receive Section 8 voucher to move outside of public housing. So, everyone will be relocated to another public housing or receive a voucher assistance.
Speaking of the vouchers, how's that process? I know, I guess it was last year, there were a few bumps in the road, to say it gently. Is that, are we not going to repeat that again this year? Has that been smoothed out?
Yes, we have definitely worked out that process. We are more automated now, using more automated system. However, we opened up our application, as you know, last year, and we received over 6,000 applicants. So, that tells you the need for our assistance here in Portsmouth. We've completed the waitlist from the original 2008 waitlist, and we exhausted those, and so now we're moving towards the new applicants that put in, so.
So, much more demand than...
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
What is that ratio? I mean, do we, do we have 6,000 anymore?
No, no. As the funding becomes available from HUD, then we put the vouchers on the street. So, we look at about maybe having about 1,900, as Commissioner Alondi said, probably before the year-end is out. So, as the money comes in, we put the vouchers out to the residents.
Okay. Dr. Pat, thanks.
Yes, I was going to ask Ms. Winston, when the voucher process starts, it is not restricted just to Portsmouth?
No, it's not.
Citizens. So, a citizen from anywhere in the state of Virginia...
Or the country.
Or the country, who knows that a city is issuing vouchers, can come to that city to be participant, doesn't have to come, online process to participate in the voucher program. So, I don't want our council, our citizens to think there are 6,500 people right here in Portsmouth. They can come from anywhere in the United States.
That is correct. They come from anywhere, and also, we do give a preference for those that live in Portsmouth. So, they work in Portsmouth, they live in Portsmouth, they're homeless, there are certain criteria that we can use to give preference. So, Portsmouth residents will get ahead of anyone else.
You mentioned HUD, and we were very much concerned, we as council, sitting on pins and needles, literally, figuratively, about the new federal budget. From your perspective, what impact will that have on our future? The HUD portion?
We're still waiting.
So, you're waiting on pins and needles?
Yes, we're waiting on pins and needles as well, absolutely, you know. Certainly, any cut will be a cut to our programs, and so, that will be a detriment to our program, the residents. And so, the amount of services that we can provide to our residents will also be impacted. So, we don't know yet what that means in terms of the impact and how it will be impacted, but if the cuts are anticipated, if we have seen, then it will be an impact to our residents.
Any special intelligence from your national organization on the federal budget?
No, they're waiting as well. We're constantly getting emails, constantly getting emails to see how this is going to play out, but, you know, we're not that optimistic.
Are all the displaced residents that were in the hotels due to the flooding, are they back?
Yes, they're back in their units.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yes.
And Mayor, Members of Council, in your executive briefs, every two weeks, Mrs. Winston provided an update. So, over the last months, each week, you knew exactly where they were with relocating the residents back to their homes.
Chairman Smith, you mentioned that letter of understanding with a developer for the Seaboard property?
Yes, sir.
Can you refresh my memory on the size of that tract of land?
If I'm not mistaken, it is 9.2 acres?
Yes.
Am I right? 9.2 acres?
Actually, 7.8 acres.
Simple.
Yeah.
So, is that the fact that we're talking retail on the corner of Turnpike and Frederick? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
So, we don't have retail land anymore?
Yes, retail.
The LOI, that's what it's about, the letter.
You said something about, you said housing, I thought, when you spoke.
Oh, no, no. No, no, no.
Oh, you didn't?
No, I was saying, he asked what the acreage was, and I said 9.2, and they said, with the retention pond, it's 7.8.
Developable.
Develop, develop-wise, can be developed.
Okay.
Commercial.
But it is commercial.
Commercial. Commercial.
How can we help you all?
Don't all speak at once.
One, we, first of all, I'm sure I speak for the Chairman, Vice Chairman, just thanks for having this meeting for us, and just shining a light on the public housing that we need. We have some great employees working for the organization, and if there was any way, and if I'm speaking out loud, slap me aside the head here.
I will.
If there's any way we could get a resolution, just so we could put it on our wall there that shows the support that the council has for public housing in Portsmouth, we'd really appreciate that. That means a lot, when the mayor and the city council are saying, hey, we've had enough turmoil. I think we're, I think we've gathered all the resources together. Secondly, from a financial, yes, sir?
Let me make sure that that's a great idea. Is there any disagreement on that?
No.
Okay. Dr. Pat, will you draft up appropriate resolution with the council's consideration and bring it back in July?
We'll bring it back July 10.
Okay.
And we all, from, as board, as Commissioners, we all bring a wealth of experience and perspectives, you know, into the organization. And mine, of course, is financial, and I've just been overwhelmed with how tight the financials are. But with that, it makes every dollar, you know, we really got to squeeze everything we can out of the dollar. And I know Ms. Winston has been working hard with EDA and marketing and planning to make sure that there's that synergistic effect with PRHA. But security is becoming a problem, all right, especially at the older units. So, if there just could be some more, more focused dialogue with the police chief and PRHA, we'd really appreciate that, because, you know, we're out there in the open.
I see Dr. Patton's making notes, and we...
Yes, sir.
I do have a meeting scheduled with the chief on Friday.
Yes, and you, Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority has a security component. Am I correct?
It does. A small, a small budget, what the budget allows for, which is very minimal.
So, they do have some security that they provide, but we shall dialogue.
You know, if that's an incumbent issue, just need to let us know, so we can sure we can work something out there. I want to make sure that we stay abreast on, particularly in that corner of...
Seaboard Frederick.
Yeah, Seaboard Square. Through our liaison or somehow, that we know what's in the pipe sooner rather than later, to make sure we all, we all agree, because I don't want it to arrive here, and then we have disagreement, rather for us to be on the same sheet as we go along through liaison, if we can do that.
Definitely not another drugstore.
You know where I'm going?
Yeah, I know where you're going. I want to recognize a little bit.
At the last EDA meeting, I'm liaison to EDA and PPIC, we had some conversation about having a liaison from PRHA at our EDA meetings, but somehow, over the years, that got lost.
Yeah, it did.
We used to do that.
We did.
And it would be, it would be very helpful, you know, it's, again, it's another time commitment. But if, maybe I'll send a note to Ms. Winston about when the meetings are and see if you have somebody that's available to just come, so that, you know, so that we can have the same kind of conversation, or if EDA is going off on a tangent on something, you go, whoa, 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 we're already working on that, so that we know.
There's two ways to do that, either with real staff or our staff, because back in the, I say back in the day, when I was a Commissioner, we also had representation from one of the two, either managers or the Attorney's Office at those orders meetings. So, either they kept the other group prior, or we had a Planning Commissioner or other Commissioner. So, one way or the other, we had them all covered between the two, so it didn't put a big burden on either group. So, maybe we have that conversation.
Take the floor for a second. I think what I'm hearing is it doesn't necessarily have to be a Commissioner, a senior staff person would be, but having someone there for that meeting would really help the cross-pollination that we need. Dr. Pat?
From our last meeting, the Members of Council, it was discussed that there was not a representative from PRHA. Since that time, the PRHA staff and the city manager staff have met. We called this to their attention. We also went back to look at documents to find out that the person who was appointed initially was the Executive Director, which was Danny Cruz, and he served on the commission for years. And it appears that, due to his illness, then Kathy Warren, who was the Assistant Director, served in his capacity. So, it is stated that the Executive Director is the person who's served in the past on the EDA as a PRHA representative.
And I will attend until our new Executive Director.
We are sharing a third of dates.
That's good.
That was quick to solve. Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah.
I got a couple of comments on the security issue. Back in the 90s, when we started the Neighborhood Impact Officer Program, the first officers that were in neighborhoods were actually PRHA officers. That's where they went first. And working in those neighborhoods then, and, you know, I haven't been out there like I wasn't, so I don't know the problem, but the biggest problem back then was, most of the people calling issues, they were not residents.
That's right.
They were people out there doing whatever they were doing that didn't belong there. So, it was a big issue with trespassing on PRHA property. And the reason I bring this up is when you had a discussion with the chief years ago, as officers, we had a form that they filled out that made us agents of PRHA. Therefore, if we caught somebody that was not a resident, that was not there specifically visiting, somebody hanging out in neighborhood, we could charge them with trespassing without having to bring somebody from PRHA to file the charges. So, I just wanted to bring that up because, you know, I was part of that years ago, and that was one of the, what worked really well. Once we got the people out of there that didn't belong, it made things a lot better.
Councilman Clark, I witnessed that. I seen y'all write people up and give trespass.
Yes, sir.
They still do that. They still do that today.
I just don't think we had, we don't have the people assigned like we used to.
The community police officers.
Right, because we have them assigned to each specific neighborhood, and it's so beneficial, because then you learn the residents, so you immediately know who's not a resident, as if you just drive through there once or twice a day, you don't learn who's there as much. So, if we have some officers that could put in those specific neighborhoods, it could help curb that problem.
Even though we have liaisons and we're going to cross-pollinate with EDA, if you ever feel a need as an authority that you need to meet with the whole council, don't hesitate. If you feel that, oh gee, we got some hot news and we need to share it immediately with council, we're a telephone call or email away for that. We're here to help you. You're helping us, but we want to do what we can to help you, particularly in these difficult financial times. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
Can we get an update on the product property development? I know that issue came up at our last council.
We can. You want to give it?
I can. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and Commissioners, I believe, as a matter of fact, I believe Councilwoman Lucas Burke gave the last update. The PRHA is working through our developer to meet the obligations and the criteria set forth by the City Council. The timetable has shifted a little bit from the April 28 timeframe. It's now expected, having worked through most of the issues, that we're looking at an August closing date at this point.
I know what we needed clarity on was that, I believe that property has some city-owned portions to it that were not originally part of the plans that, as far as the financing that is in place now. If you, we needed to get an update. I thought that it was supposed to be some build-out of some parcels before the city properties transferred.
And that is still the conditions that are in place, that Parcel 3 and 4 are contingent upon meeting milestones with regard to Parcel 1 and 2.
Okay, that was the update. Also, the, it was mentioned about the finances... Also, the, it was mentioned about the finances, so do we know now about that seven million dollar transaction? Are we comfortable in saying where those monies went? Because we haven't received any documentation of that, and I know, Ms. LaLanne, you mentioned that the finances, so, so we have documentation now to show where that seven million dollar Holiday Inn transfer of funds into the PRHA, where that actually went.
I'm going to pass that to Alicia to give the official response.
We have documentation that shows that. I don't think it was, we, we, we never thought that the money was missing. We have documentation, we've had documentation, you know, for the Holiday Inn site.
Well, can you share that? Because the issue is not just that you have documentation, and it wasn't that it's missing, it was how it was allocated, and that's, that has not been brought to council. So if that's something, you can see, I've asked the city attorney for even a, you have a settlement statement. Is that part of your documentation?
I don't think we, I have not seen a settlement statement, but I can account for the funds.
Well, there wouldn't be a settlement statement, would there? Because this was a loan payoff, the title stayed the same, is that correct?
Yes.
Well, if you have that documentation, that can lay the rest that shows where that seven million went, because I know I've been requesting it for quite a while, and we haven't received any documentation, so can you forward that to the city manager?
Yes.
Can we do this? Can we ask you and the city manager to work up a report if there is a release of the Dita Trust? Because I'm sure that the financial institution had that, just supply that.
We'll bring back.
And let me, let me show it clear. I'm quite sure there was a release. The question I'm asking is that there was a seven million transfer, how much of that went where and to whom? That's the question I'm asking.
Okay, can you two work together?
Yes, we'll work together, and at least bring you some update on the tenth.
All right.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah.
Well, yes, sir?
Yeah. One of the privileges, being on the commission, has been for me, and, and learning is how significantly we impact the lives of families, the wonderful citizens in Portsmouth. And I'm very honored and thankful for that privilege, and I want to do it to the best of my ability. And sometimes, this meeting, I would, my feeling, this meeting is valuable, significant, and important to hell with you, and as often as we can, I would like to do this again.
Yes, sir.
The other part of that is meeting with other players, significant players in the city, and being able to dialogue with them about the direction, if they aren't aware of it. In particular, education. We did a tour of some of the properties this last week, and we saw kids out in the community, and it touched my heart, it blessed my heart. But I want to, I want to make sure that we, the decisions we are making, everybody collaborates. And I think collaboration is vital in today's world, especially with budgets that are being restricted and limited and almost eliminated. So I just think, I want, I'm thankful for the privilege to be here, but I think more collaboration like this, I guess what I'm saying, and I just use education, because I looked at those kids, and I want them to get the best education in the world, world-class education is where it's at. And so I'm thankful, and would like to see more of this with the other players in the city, with the PRHA.
Thank you.
One more question on the, we need an update, since we're here together, update on the receivership issue with the properties of PRHA and Portsmouth Partnership and the city. Where, where are we on that?
I have some additional information I have to get back to PRHA, and we are trying to schedule, as I sent you all a meeting, a meeting amongst council to see where we are, but I do have a request from PRHA that I need to fill this week in order to determine where we'll be.
So, so is PRHA on the same page with us as far as the ownership of those properties? Was that owned by GPDC, or is that-
We have moved this.
The city, is that PRHA? Since we're here together, where, where are we, talking about collaboration, where are we on that?
Well, I think that-
Who actually, who owns it? Because there is a possibility that the city and PRHA could lose significant assets if it goes into receivership and is sold. And so are we on one accord with preventing that receivership?
I, I have expressed, and without going into closed session matters, I've expressed on every occasion, the city's desire, as you all instructed me, to preserve the corpus as well as the real estate. And so that's the statement I've put across the board in terms of preserving all of that.
Right. What I'm asking is, since we're here together, is that also, and we talk about collaboration, is that also the desire of PRHA to, to keep that out of receivership?
In order, given the nature of the current matter, Dr. Whitaker, I will certainly come back and report to council in a closed session with regard to that particular question.
And I think that would be good, because this new council has not had a chance to discuss it amongst ourselves, and make sure that we are on, as a city council, of one accord. So let's schedule that, that meeting.
Will PRHA council be in that meeting too?
I think that council itself needs to first find out where we are, where we philosophically want to be.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because those properties are supposed to be jointly owned between the city, PRHA, and Portsmouth Partnership. And how can we discuss it without all the players at the table agreeing to the direction that we want to go to protect that asset?
I understand what you're saying, but I think that, in deference to my, to all of my colleagues on council, we have not, as a new council, had a chance to discuss this, and I think we, we need to have that conversation.
I agree.
Okay, well, let's, let's schedule it.
Okay.
My question is, though, will PRHA be involved with this?
I recommend, and don't take this the wrong way, I recommend that that discussion first take place with city council, that we find out where our, our philosophies are, and then once we understand that, then go forward. Anybody disagree with that?
I agree.
This council, this body hadn't-
No.
Because I, Dr. Whitaker, I don't, I don't know all of the properties that you're referring to. Are we able to say which ones you're mentioning?
I know, I know the, there are several properties that were under greater Portsmouth Development Corporation. They were supposed to have been a third ownership, but evidently, if one party could go and move the court to be in receivership, and we still don't know yet our position on it, then that causes some concern, particularly with the amount of assets involved.
We have three opportunities, and I'm talking to council. We can discuss it tonight in another closed session, which I think is personally premature, because I think we could do it tomorrow evening, or we can do it the first meeting in July. And with that, we could have the list of the properties that you're talking about that are owned by-
Yeah, I'd like to give the city attorney a chance.
Exactly. And I do advocate the first meeting in July. I'm not talking about tonight, because I think-
Right, okay.
In order for us to have a fruitful and meaningful discussion, we need to have that information in advance. So let's schedule this for-
July tenth.
Either the first Monday or the first Tuesday, preferably the first Monday.
The tenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I agree with you about collaboration, but we need to, we need to know where we are.
Yes. Thank you.
I guess before we close out, I mentioned in one of my previous liaison reports that the city had funded the PRHA with thirty-nine thousand dollars, and, and, you know, for this forum, if you could tell us how some of those funds are being allocated for uses.
That will be used for our resident services program and our family self-sufficiency program. So we promote self-sufficiency. One of the things, ways that we do that is through education, assistive education, budgeting, parenting, resources, helping with them with GED classes and things of that nature. So those funds will be used to assist in those efforts, and to helping our families move on towards self-sufficiency.
Well, again, if there are no other comments or questions, thank you so much. Thank you, of course, for what, what you do, devoting your time. Thank you for agreeing to take a beautiful Monday evening out of the first of the summer 2017 and meeting with us. And we embrace the concept of meeting with you all as frequently as we need to meet.
Great.
And again, thank you. And with that, if you want to adjourn your, your meeting, Chairman Smith, and then I'll ask council to take a two-minute recess as we let people clear.
Okay. Any other discussions, comments, commissions? If you're being there, meeting is adjourned.
We'll take a two-minute recess as we change seats. I'm going to re-convene our meeting. We're back in order.
We're ready. Okay. Not yet.
And Dr. Patton?
Yes. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of city council. This evening's first presenter is Mr. Neil Amen, Chief Executive Officer of Sharmeen Hotels. Mr. Amen oversees the company's day-to-day operations, as well as its acquisitions, development, and financing activities. The Sharmeen Hotels real estate holdings include properties under the Hilton, Marriott, Intercontinental, Starwood, and Hyatt brands. Mr. Amen serves on numerous boards and commissions, most notably, he serves on the Treasury Board of the Commonwealth of Virginia. In January of 2017, the Sharmeen Hotels purchased a charming waterfront jewel in the city of Portsmouth, the Renaissance Hotel. Tonight, Mr. Amen will present the Sharmeen Hotels' vision, goals, and plans for the Renaissance Hotel. Our second presenter is Ms. Nancy Perry, Museums Director. Ms. Perry will present the proposed cultural arts district, spearheaded by the late Ms. Lessey Parker and Mrs. Karen Burgess of the Museum and Fine Arts Commission. The commission has worked diligently on community engagement during a two-year process through presentations to civic leagues, artists, Old Town Business Association, Portsmouth Partnership, support public, support public, public arts, and the Economic Development Authority. The third presenter is Ms. Barbara Vincent, Secretary and Ms. Rebecca Laris from Portsmouth, from Support Portsmouth Art Group. The SPPA is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to commission and/or purchase and install public art in the city of Portsmouth. Presenting this evening will be Mrs. Barbara Vincent, Secretary and Rebecca Laris, designer of the sculpture. We will begin with Mr. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Patton, for that very nice introduction. I really appreciate that. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of city council, friends and constituents of the city of Portsmouth, for allowing me to tell you a little bit about Sharmeen Hotels and our vision for your beautiful crown jewel Renaissance Hotel and Conference Center. So I have a lot of slides, so I'm going to kind of move quickly, and I know there may be some questions afterwards, but please feel free to interrupt me if you have any immediate questions. Sharmeen Hotels was started over thirty years ago, actually in nineteen seventy-nine, by my father and his brother-in-law. My father actually came here to work for Virginia Department of Transportation. He did that for ten years. He worked in downtown Richmond. My mother was also a government employee. She worked for the State Department as an accountant. So they both worked together for ten years, and then they decided that they wanted to get in business for themselves. So their first property was this motel, which is called the Old Stage Motor Lodge. It's on route, it's on Interstate ninety-five at exit fifty-eight, single-story motel. We purchased that in nineteen eighty-two. We lived there, you know, the three of us, lived in that hotel for, for five years, in two rooms, and really just pitched in wherever we could alongside our associates to do whatever was necessary. One fond memory for me is my mother used to make sandwiches for guests, because they were coming from New York going to Florida, and when they checked in, they would want to go back out to eat, so she would present them with a sandwich. So it really taught me a lot about the business, and taught me a lot about taking care of people at an early age. I like to start with this, because, you know, a lot of people think about hotels, and they think about, you know, the rooms and the beds, but we really are in the people business. We're in the business of mentoring people, providing great service to people, and taking care of our associates. I mean, that's really the business that we're in. That's what's going to make us successful or unsuccessful. And you can see, we have a lot of activities that we do with our associates. On the far right is myself in a dunk tank. One of the hotels that challenged me, that they could become one of the best hotels in the country for guest satisfaction, and they achieved that goal, so I was in a suit one day, and they had the dunk tank out, and they said, we're ready to dunk you a few times. But it really is a great corporate culture, and one that really, you know, fosters great guest satisfaction. Quickly about our history, you know, we built our first hotel in nineteen eighty-six. We still have that hotel today, and I know that was one point that we made when speaking with the EDA, is that we don't really divest our hotels, we're really in it for the long run. And what that means is that every decision we make, we do for the long run. When we decide to replace something, we want to make sure it's going to last twenty-plus years. When we build a team, we want to build a team that's going to be there for twenty-plus years. And we have that credibility, because we've never really sold any hotels. So I think people gravitate towards us because they have that, you know, sense of security and longevity.
What hotel was that, nineteen eighty-six?
So that was, we actually built, it was a Days Inn at Fort Lee, so that's down in Hopewell, Virginia. And, and so once we, we had the Chester Old Stage Motor Lodge, we moved to that hotel, and we lived there, and I lived there until I was twelve years old. And we built that hotel. That was the first hotel that we built, and we still have it today. It still makes money today, which we're very proud of. And then today, we, you know, the Portsmouth Renaissance Hotel is actually our fiftieth hotel, so it's always going to have a very special place in our heart. So in two thousand seventeen, we crossed sixty-five hundred hotel rooms in fifty hotels. We're very honored to be listed as one of the top hotel owners and developers in the country. So this is a list that Hotel Business, a trade publication, puts out every single year, and you can see that we're ranked twentieth with fifty-one hotels. That includes one hotel under construction. But, you know, most of the companies ahead of us are public companies, or companies that use a lot of investor money, and we're locally owned and operated, so we're very proud of, of being on this list with some amazing companies and at this level. We are one of the top twenty-five companies in Richmond. This slide is actually probably five years old, so we've moved up, you know, quite a few places, but, you know, currently we have three thousand associates, and we do have thirty-five hotels in central Virginia, but I also want to point out that we have nine hotels in the Tidewater region. So we've had a strong history in Richmond, but now we're moving and really focusing more on this area, and we want to build a great team in this area as well. So just showing some of our hotels, and of course, the Renaissance right in the middle there in the black is, is right in center. We're very strong with Hilton. We have thirty-one hotels with them, and then we have nine Marriott, and then four with Starwood, so we have about thirteen with Marriott. We're actually doing a lot more with Marriott now in terms of new development. But you can see that we're in four states. We're in Virginia, North Carolina, Maryland, and Florida. So another rule that we have is we want to be close to the hotels, so we can interact with the staff, we can shake hands. Before I came here today, obviously, I went to the Renaissance, but I also went to our other hotels in the area, met some associates, you know, we took some pictures together that'll probably be in the newsletter, hopefully. So we really like to bond with our associates and help them with their everyday jobs. This is an org chart, obviously, you can't, you can't see it, but what I wanted to highlight here is that we have a very strong corporate infrastructure. Our corporate infrastructure is there to support our hotels. So we have architects, we have designers, engineers, sales and marketing professionals. We really want our hotel staff to really be focused on taking care of the guests, not worrying about a lot of things that they shouldn't be worried about. So we have a lot of bench strength that can really- So we have a lot of bench strength that can really help us solve a lot of issues at the hotels. And then I wanted to show you some of our hotels. This is our Hilton Full Service Hotel in Richmond, Virginia. We built this in 2009, so it was a very challenging time, but we still managed to get it open. We didn't, you know, abandon the project. And this hotel has won many awards. It's been four Diamond every single year that it's been open. We just won the highest honor this year. It was, this hotel was number one in the Hilton brand for guest satisfaction. So that's for all Hilton's hotels, all Hilton hotels open in North America and South America. This hotel was number one for guest satisfaction. So we're very, we're very, and that's a new update. I think the last time, we hadn't won that award. So we're very proud of that, and we hope to bring that same success to Portsmouth. Just a picture of the ballroom, kind of showing that we really don't spare any expense when we develop hotels. We really, you know, thought about the ceiling, you know, thought about, you know, how to make it different and unique from other hotels in the area, and that's what we plan to do here as well. Just some of our other hotels. This is a Residence Inn at Newport News Airport. You can see, you know, it's contemporary, it's fresh, it's clean. Again, we really just want to cater to the current trends in the industry. We want to make sure that what we do is timeless and that the guests really embrace the decor and the trends. Another one of our hotels, this is one of our older hotels. It's very, it's very easy to show the new hotels, but I also like to show some of the older hotels so you can see, you know, what our existing hotels look like. And one thing I want to point out here is the uplighting because that's one of the things that we want to do in Portsmouth, is really make it a beacon that you can see from Norfolk and from other areas. So we're working with our architects and engineers on that as well. And then this is a hotel that we built in 1998, so really approaching 20 years old. And you can see, like, inside, we've completely modernized it. You know, we use a lot of stone, saw, you know, stone countertops everywhere, the pendants, the ceiling, you know. We really try and make it unique. There's probably no other Hampton Inn in the country that has these features. You know, most people keep it very simple and straight, but we have designers and architects that really help us push the envelope.
Where is that hotel?
This is in Richmond, Virginia. It's actually, one of them is in Midlothian, there are two Hampton Inns, and one of them is in Hopewell, Virginia. And that's the picture, this on the bottom right, that was built in 1993. So we, it's, you know, it's 24 years old now, and we still have it, it's still doing So this was our latest project that we did in downtown Richmond. It just kind of highlights what I believe are the current trends in the industry. You know, hospitality's always been about clean rooms and providing a great night to sleep, but now it's more about providing a unique experience. So that's food and beverage, that sense of smell, sense of touch, really kind of incorporating all the five senses. So you can see that, you know, we did everything custom here. We have all the, this is another Hampton Inn. We did, you know, wood paneling, we spent a lot of money on the ceilings, we have, you know, the screens here. This is eight 42-inch screens that we put in the lobby. We added a rooftop pool, which is very difficult because you have water weight on top of a 20-story building, but we wanted to make sure that we provide that unique amenity for our guests. And this hotel also has the rooftop restaurant and bar. I think I showed some pictures of these last time I was here. I'll show you, I'll give you some updates on that. It's been a year, it's been extremely successful, but, you know, this is what hospitality's about. It's about providing a good night to sleep, but then also providing a unique space like this where people can entertain, can enjoy themselves. It's for locals as well as guests. And that's what we're really thinking about here in Portsmouth. There's so much potential with that Renaissance. We want to recreate these spaces here in your city. You can see we have a lot of, you know, happy hour events. It's really interesting, Capital One, they're based far away from us, 30 miles away from this hotel. They have so many events on this space to show their millennial workforce that Richmond is hip and cool. They actually bring them here to show them that we have venues like this in Richmond so they can attract more people to come work there. This shows a hotel that we just renovated, so this is an Embassy Suites Hotel in Richmond, and you can see that, you know, we use a lot of stone again and wood and just make it very fresh, clean, and modern. Again, we went way above what was required of us to really ensure that the guests have that unique experience. Again, a bar that's, you know, very unique in a very high space. You know, I think it came out extremely well. And then, no presentation about our company, in my opinion, would be complete without talking about our corporate culture, which is so very dear and very important to us. It's the secret sauce of our company. We're a family-based company. We treat everybody like family in our company. A lot of people say that. We really mean it. You know, I urge you to talk to associates if you ever go to the Portsmouth Hotel. Hopefully, they'll give you that same feedback. We really believe in the golden rule, treat others how you wish to be treated. We don't ask people to do things that we wouldn't do ourselves. You know, that's another rule that we have. We believe that our corporate team is support staff, 100% support staff. We believe that the best ideas come from the people that touch the guests every single day, right? They know what the guests want. People that sit in the office are not the experts, it's the people that touch those guests every single day. So we really value those associates. One of the things that we do for our associates is we have this Associate Appreciation Day. So we do this every year in September. We invite all of our associates, all 3,000 associates. We tell them, "Bring your friends, bring your family." There's no limit to how many people they can invite. We cater it, we provide a lot of children's games. And the reason we do this is because our line-level associates are the ones that sometimes can't afford a vacation, can't afford to go to the Caribbean, can't afford to, you know, take a long vacation. So those are the people that we really want to take care of and have an event for. We also do a Santa's Brunch that's in December, same thing. We invite them to bring their families. Our team dresses up as, you know, Santa Claus, and it's just a very nice event for them. Just, you know, some of our kind of rules and what we believe in, servant leadership, of course. We want to make travel memorable, expect the unexpected. That's a really big pillar for us. I think you saw that in some of the pictures. Continuously recognize our associates who are the backbone of our company. Provide outstanding product. You know, again, take it one step above what people expect and then support our associates. I mean, we have, we have a GM advisory committee, so we really welcome a lot of feedback. We have an employee hotline where it rings directly to my office. It's completely anonymous. If something's good or bad going on at the hotel, they call. And, you know, it's, it's great feedback for us to know what's going on. So we really believe in doing what's right all the time and improving ourselves each and every day. So the next couple of slides will be really interesting for you, given what we're talking about in Portsmouth. So these are some of our concepts that we've done in other places. This is the Bell &amp; James French American Restaurant on the left, and you can see that the bar is, you know, is always a very active space. We've had pop-up dinners here where we had celebrity chefs that will come in, we'll have a seven-course meal with wine pairings. So we plan to do some of those events in Portsmouth as well. And then on the right, we have two flyers. We have three events that we put on for New Year's Eve in Richmond at three different locations. The first one is at the Hilton that I showed you earlier. It's an upscale event, usually around 45-plus is the age group. We have the Shoeless Steakhouse, so we bundle that with a dinner. It's been extremely successful since 2009. It's been going on for eight years. People come from Charlottesville, people come from northern Virginia, they make a weekend out of it. It's just a really nice event. And then underneath that, we have Moonlight Circus, which is an event that we have at a Doubletree, and that has some entertainers and some performers for a little bit of a younger age group. We had 700 people this past December at that location. So we really believe in creating some new events that can help bring some energy to all of our facilities. So again, some more events, you know, we have Good Shot Shooty is a jazz band. So we, when we serve brunch at hotels, we invite them to come and play. They play with the guests, they dance with the guests. It's, you know, again, you're catering to all different types of people, all different types of interest. We had a Grammy Award-winning artist, believe it or not, at our rooftop, Cedric Gervais. He came there in December, completely sold out, just, you know, amazing event. We have rooftop yoga that we do. Currently, we're doing salsa. We have a reggae night. We have 11 events at that rooftop every single week. So we cater to every single person. And we have 1,000 people that come in on the weekends. Every Friday and Saturday, it's 1,000 people that will come. So I invite all of you to come. Please come. Let me know. We really would enjoy, you know, entertaining you and showing you what we can do. So these are just some of the pictures. You can see of some of the events that we've had. I mean, it's just standing room only everywhere, you know, a lot of social media. People are all over social media, tagging themselves, talking about Richmond, people that are not from Richmond. This is an event that we had just this past week. Frank Mason was a Petersburg standout basketball player. Then he played for Kansas, and he went in the second round last week. So he had his draft party at our Cabana rooftop. And so this is from social media, and then I guess this is Lil Wayne, you know, he's a famous singer. So he gave him a shout-out on social media, which got 10,000 likes immediately. So these are just some of the things that you can do to kind of get people interested in your city and in your venue, and that's what we plan to do here in Portsmouth as well. And then, of course, giving back is very important for us. You know, it's interesting to hear the conversation earlier because affordable housing is something that's very important to me. I've been on the board of the Better Housing Coalition in Richmond since 2009. I was treasurer. I'm still on that board. I work very closely with Richmond Redevelopment Housing Authority. The executive director there is a good friend of mine, and we talk about some of their public housing, you know, problems and solutions. So it's very key to us because a lot of our associates, unfortunately, you know, not necessarily live in public housing, but, you know, have challenges finding affordable housing. So that's, that's a very important cause for me. The other causes that, you know, that we support are Central Virginia Food Bank, Greater Richmond Scan, YWCA for domestic violence, Virginia Council on Economic Education, which helps financial literacy all across the state. So the theme here for us is supporting local organizations and organizations that really affect our associates, you know, affect our line-level associates. And we just added the Elizabeth River Project, so we just supported that project, which I know here's, which is here in Portsmouth, and we plan to do some more here in Portsmouth as well. Just design and purchasing, you know, once you have a nice building, you still have to maintain it. So I think it's very important to talk about the fact that we have four full-time designers that can make quick repairs and replacements to our building. We don't want our managers having to deal with that. We don't want our guests to see eyesores when things break. So we're able to quickly, you know, purchase new items and ensure that, you know, your hotel, the Portsmouth Hotel, will stay, you know, pristine for years to come. And then just lastly, just want to show you some of our future development, and really what I want to highlight is that we really want to now focus on best-in-class projects, projects that we're proud of, projects that win awards, and that's really what we want for Portsmouth as well. Something where people will tell other people to, "Go, go visit Portsmouth. Go see what these guys have done there. Go see that great city." And that's really what our goal is. This picture right here is for a project we're doing. It's a Moxie Hotel, which is Marriott's millennial brand. It's catered to millennials. It's actually a European brand. It's from Europe, and we're doing the only Moxie in the state of Virginia. So we were lucky enough to be awarded that by Marriott, and you can see that it's just, you know, completely different than what you'd expect in a hotel. And with that, just want to thank you again for your time and, most importantly, for your confidence in our company.
Well, thank you, sir. This gives you goosebumps. It's very obvious that you have a passion for what you do and a passion for the communities that you're in.
Well, thank you.
And with that, I'd like to open it up for my colleagues to have questions. And Chair Widdaker.
Thank you. Thank you for the excellent presentation. You mentioned Frank Smith had his signing party there in Richmond. Next time you speak with him, see when he signs his NBA contract, if he can have the signing party here in Portsmouth.
Yes, yes, no.
So that we can mend the relationship because he knows about Portsmouth because I C Norcom beat them in the state championship.
I like that. I like that. That's good.
Love the host. Also, our city manager has instituted an internship program, and I was just curious, opportunities for our young folks to intern at the hotel.
Yes, definitely. Definitely. We do that in Richmond, we do that at other hotels. Many of the interns have become full-time, you know, associates with us. One of the things that I didn't get to mention in detail is that we really believe in hiring good people, not people with tremendous amount of experience. It's not that those people are bad, but we really believe in giving people an opportunity. And we promoted a lot of people from within. We have people that have started with us as front desk associates that now oversee eight hotels. So that's really what we believe in.
That would be excellent.
That's right. And Dr. Widdaker, I C Norcom's hotel management program right now is connected in all, probably about the last four or five years with the Renaissance Hotel. So I see nothing but broadening growth from new ownership and with the schools working with it.
Did I see a hand up over here? Yes, ma'am.
We met before when you were at EDA, and I think I told you, I'm so happy with everything you presented, and I'm excited because I live next door to the hotel, that, you know, to see some great new furnishings and fire pits and that patio area, although I know it's terrible now with the construction of the seawall, but that should be finished in 30 days or less. So let's hope, you know, by fall, might I be able to sit on a pretty furnished patio with a.
As long as the crack isn't there, we can, we can, I mean, the furniture, we're definitely going to replace, for sure, no question, and that's our plan.
It's a fabulous patio.
Oh, no question.
It's always been underutilized and not been.
Well, even that rotunda, I think we spoke about that last time. That's, that's my vision, is to have maybe a circular bar or something there where people can walk right outside and you're looking at, you know, the ships and beautiful skyline. I mean, it's a no-brainer to me.
Is there going to be a time when you're going to, like, have the pretty architectural boards to say, now that we've been here a while, this is what we plan, and this is our vision, and this is where we're going with it?
Yes, yes. We will, and I will stay in communication with Dr. Patton, and we'll definitely send you those, and I'm happy to come back and present. Marriott has given us two years to do the renovation because part of it just takes time. We have to, you know, have a designer, they have to design it, then Marriott has to approve it. So that just takes time. We're ready to start, you know, today. And we have done some work, you know, meanwhile. It's not that we're waiting, you know, for the full two years.
Any rooftop activities here?
We're going to look into the structure, yeah. No, we've had that, we've had that thought, you know. There is that rooftop, there is some patio space over there, and we'll definitely, you know, make that more active space.
Lisa.
Yes, and I met you first time when I was Chair of EDA last year, and then I got elected to the council, so I'm here now. But you had mentioned about the restaurant in there being a full-service restaurant. I think you came on a Wednesday or something, and you said it was shut down, so you want to make that more open to the community so that that will be an additional place where people could go and, you know, dine.
Yes, no question. I mean, the two restaurants you saw here, the French American and the rooftop, that's really 95% is local. It's, the guests, when they come, they don't even realize that it's there until we tell them. It's really the locals that are coming in every day and frequenting that establishment. Yes, sir.
When you were at EDA, you talked about the start date. Has that changed? What's the start date for renovations?
We plan to start probably this winter. You know, right now, believe it or not, it's, the hotel's extremely busy. In fact, we're sold out this whole week. We have a conference, which is, which is great, obviously. So, and we have to get approval from Marriott to do anything. They have to approve every single thing that we, that we propose. So we're going through that process with them right now.
And as you contemplate building a Four Seasons Resort, I'm sure, I'm sure you've seen that vacant piece of property right over there.
Yeah. No question, no question.
We were talking about the hotel number 52.
Yeah. No, we were talking about that, you know. If you don't mind, can I introduce my team? I didn't get a chance to do that in the beginning.
If you would come.
So Tony Pinto is our general manager of the Renaissance, and he came from the Renaissance in Maryland, so, you know, a very large, successful hotel. We handpicked him because he knows the brand, he knows the experience that we're trying to provide to our guests, you know. So he's, he's a great addition. And then we have Nareesh Patel is our Regional Director of Operations. He oversees the nine hotels that we have in this area as well. So I don't know, Tony, would you like to say anything about your experience so far?
No.
Would you go to the podium?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Pick up on the mic.
I'm happy to be here. As Neil said, I've had experience before, previously with Renaissance in Maryland in New Jersey and other Marriott hotels, about 15 years approximately altogether. in New Jersey and other Marriott hotels, about 15 years approximately altogether. I used vacation here in Portsmouth. My wife has family here in Norfolk, so through connections, we have a lot of connections in the hotel business, so through connections, I had vacation here four times and stayed at the hotel, not knowing that one day I'd be, I'd be here, make this my place of work. So, I'm certainly happy to be here. We have a great vision for the property, and I look forward to welcoming everyone morning, day, or night for breakfast, lunch, dinner, a place to stay, welcoming family members, and so on. So, I'm extremely happy to be here, and I look forward to hosting a lot of the city events and other personal events as they come. So, thank you.
Any questions of the general manager?
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions from council? Well, again, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Oh, Dr. Patton?
Mayor, one of the things I wanted to say is, coming on board in September of last year and hearing kind of third-hand that our hotel was going up for sale, and I literally say that third-hand, I immediately said that, "This is our hotel." I remember when the hotel opened, and I was the first one to walk in there, and behind me was Mr. Massey, who is no longer with us. But one of the things, when we started exploring and looking at how the owners that were in Texas, which had never been here where he had met with council or the team or anybody, didn't even know who they were, I said, "We need to find somebody that will be touchable, reachable, and like our city and what we're doing." And it's only a blessing that Neil and his team bought our hotel. It's really, it's really significant because I called him this morning. Anytime I've reached out to him, he has always been available, and that makes a big difference. So, we're just excited that you're a part of our family now.
We are. We're family.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
And if I may, Mayor, I just want to say that, you know, your city, you know it, but as an outsider, has tremendous potential. I mean, I see it, you know. We were just talking. We walked here from the Renaissance, you know, some of the parking lots, I guarantee you will be, there'll be apartment buildings on those parking lots in the future. I saw it in Richmond. I've seen it in other cities, and you have that potential here. I mean, it's going to happen, you know. So, congratulations on your vision.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you again to you and your team and to your family.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks for adopting us.
We're family, yes.
With that, we'll take a two-minute recess to allow for a change in technology and a stretch. We'll come back to order, please. Come back to order. Dr. Patton?
Yes. Mayor, members of council, Mrs. Perry will present the proposed cultural arts district. Mrs. Perry?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the proposed cultural arts district. And I want to say, the presentation just before this is a wonderful segue into the cultural arts district. So, whoever sat that off, I really appreciate it, followed by the next presentation. So, we'll give you an overview and define the cultural arts district and go over the vision and the goals.
The door has to stay.
So, what is a cultural arts district? Quite simply, it's downtown and beyond. The creation and adoption of a cultural art, of cultural arts districts is being used nationally for downtown revitalization as an economic development tool and as a means to promote and enhance a community's cultural arts assets. It's a demarcated urban area intended to create a critical mass of places, which we already have. We have art galleries, theaters, music venues, historic sites, faith organizations, neighborhoods, public art, business districts, educational facilities, museums, farmer markets and festivals. It's a place of creativity, inclusiveness, livability, and community partnerships. The vision and the goals. The vision, the proposed boundaries go from High to Elm Streets and to the seawall. North to Queen Streets and south to King Streets from Elm to Water Streets. It includes Portside, Portsmouth Pavilion and Festival Park, Portsmouth Colored Community Library Museum, the Jewish Cultural Center, and the Railroad Museum. And this is an overlay map, and we tried to include in the map the historic churches in or adjacent to the proposed district, educational and museum facilities, theater and performance venues, public art and monuments, businesses, and then the yellow is the proposed cultural arts district. So, we're looking at cultural arts branding, gateways such as signage at entry points, and banners along High Street. The goals are to engage the community, celebrate diversity, establish business and art partnerships, enhance and support tourism, support existing businesses, support business development, and support residential development. The proposed district is based on the concept that recognition and promotion of the city's many arts and cultural assets is an important element of the city's overall economic strategy for revitalizing downtown and beyond. It will enhance the area for future residents, tourists, and businesses, which are critical. The location and density of existing cultural arts resources provide an excellent starting point for the proposed new district benefits. It leverages the community's current assets, promotes residential development, attracts diverse businesses, enhances and supports tourism, supports culture as an engine for attracting and retaining young professionals. Next steps. We would seek the approval and adoption of the cultural arts district based on State Code 15.2-1129.1, and then, from there, would be able to work on the development of a cultural arts district. The cultural arts districts are done in different ways across Virginia, but this is the way most of the cities and towns in Virginia have done their cultural arts district is through this state code. Originally, you had to go to the General Assembly to have a cultural arts district designated, but in 2009, it was given to the cities and towns, to city councils and town administrators, to administrations, to approve those cultural arts districts. I'll be happy to answer anything on the cultural arts district. Bob Baldwin will be happy to answer anything on zoning. Vincent Jones will be happy to answer anything on the existing incentives from the EDA, which overlays part of the cultural arts district. And Lavoris Pace, if we have questions on branding or marketing at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much for that great, great presentation.
I'd just like to recognize, I think there are a whole lot of folks from the museum and fine arts commissions and communities that are here. We ought to recognize.
Would the appropriate person introduce them, please?
Okay.
There's your...
Museum and Fine Arts Commission, present and former members. Sandra, Sandra, present and former members.
They could actually introduce themselves.
This is, the group has been working.
And this is, would you tell council and the public who they are officially?
Individually?
Well...
This is the Museum and Fine Arts Commission. They're appointed by city council to advise the city council on museums and culture and arts matters with the city. They also recommend to city council the cultural arts grants that are awarded through city council each year. They support the museums and a host of other things, and this is the very best group to work with. They are, they're creative and they're passionate, and it's been wonderful going on this journey with them on this cultural arts district.
I assume that they're here not only to support you and your presentation, but to recommend to council that we do this. Would you ask each member to stand up and state their name?
Sure.
And loud, please.
Mr. Oze, do you want to start?
My name is Lawrence Oze. I was raised in Portsmouth, went away for about 45 years. Moved back in 2013, living what used to be Outa Barber. When I asked people, they said, "Where do you live?" I said, "Westbury." They said, "Where is that?" I said, "I remember Outa Barber." "Oh, yeah, I remember Outa Barber." Okay, that's where I reside. Happy to be back in Portsmouth and happy to be working with the city in some number of capacities.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Tanya Street. I am not a born citizen of Portsmouth, but I'm really happy to be here. I've been here since 2012, and it's really been a pleasure just serving my community and being a part of this commission, so thank you.
And she'll be the new chair in July.
The new chair? Congratulations.
Rob Wilber, not a Portsmouth native either. I moved here in December of '11 when I married a Portsmouth girl. I don't know, I wouldn't have any time ever. And I ended up working with this group and following through on the vision that was there before I got on the commission and seeing the commission.
Good evening. Dante Orles, I'm currently the outgoing chair for the past two sessions, two years. Lifetime resident in Portsmouth. I'm an I.C. Norcombe graduate. I've been employed in Norfolk for the past 16 years. I love this commission. It's my first and only commission. I'm looking to return.
Just have to stay off a year and reapply again.
Good evening. I'm Karen Burgess. I was fortunate enough to be mentored by Leslie Horton Parker, where this idea all began. I just moved to Portsmouth in 2011, and when I joined the commission, that was the first project I put my eyes on, the cultural arts district. And Leslie and I actually beat the pavement, I mean, literally, walked the streets of High Street, looking at empty storefronts, and taking in early meetings with Toy Wilson, who was then in economic development. And that was many years ago because your terms are three years each, and I'm in my second one now, hoping to see this through, so.
Very good.
Good evening. I'm Billy Montgomery Cook. I reside in the Prentice Park section of Portsmouth. I was born here, but moved back in 1989. This is the second commission that I've served on with the city. The first one was the History Commission, and now the Museum of Fine Arts.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Clope. Born and raised in Portsmouth. Moved back here in 2013 after going to the University of South Carolina for school. This is my first commission that I've been appointed to. I've been on it for about a month now, and excited to see the new vision for the city, starting with the adoption of this cultural arts district.
My name is Sandra Boo. I was born in Norfolk, but I consider Portsmouth my home because I've always lived here. I'm a local attorney, as some of you probably already know. This is my fifth ward. I started on wards in Portsmouth when I graduated from college, and Debra and I go way, way back. But I must say that I served on this ward for six years, and I just rotated off, but I have never met a more passionate group of people who have been involved in this project for six years or more. And I think that their dedication and Nancy's dedication to the project has really come to fruition, and we're looking forward to your vote on this.
Clifford King Harbin. I was called to serve St. John's Church in January 2011 and live in Old Town. This is the first commission I've been on. I'm the newest one with this, starting the three-year term, and I think we already have a cultural arts district, just have to put the name behind it.
I guess I'm last. My name is Donna Rogers. I was not born in Portsmouth, but have lived here over 30 years, so I've been here most of my life and have been, this is my second term on the commission, and I've enjoyed every bit of it and enjoy working with this great group of people, and we look forward to making this district a reality for our city. It's much needed, and we can do it. We've already got the groundwork out there.
Thank you.
Very good.
I'm going to stand up because I can't see everybody, and I'm on behalf of council, and I said this earlier tonight, our time is our scariest resource, not our money. And the fact that you give your scariest resource to our community, to your community, to make it better and bring people together, it's too huge. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart personally for your service to our community. God bless you all. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can we get an overview of the incentives? You mentioned there were incentives for being in that district. Can we just get a...
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman Whitaker. So, as proposed, there are no incentives tied to your approval of the cultural arts district, but state code allows incentives just as we have with our enterprise zones or our local incentive programs. So, they are the same sorts of rebates of taxes and fees, et cetera, but none are proposed at this point.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions? Everybody on council.
Great.
Bring back the...
July 10. July 10. It's on, it's coming.
All right. Any problems with that? Okay. Now, Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, members of council will now have Ms. Barbara Vincent and Rebecca Laris to present our proposed project to support Portsmouth Public Arts Group.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. Good evening. I wasn't born in Portsmouth either, but I got here as quick as I could. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. And my esteem, I was a former colleague of the commission, and I couldn't be any more proud of what they've accomplished. I am Barbara Vincent, and I'm speaking on behalf of Support Portsmouth Public Art tonight. We are very grateful to you for the opportunity to share this very exciting program that we have been working on for almost a year. Seven years ago, our organization started placing public art in public spaces in Portsmouth. We hope you've seen some of them, the toad that sits in front of the children's museum, which is probably the most photographed spot in Portsmouth at the moment, and certainly the most loved because we don't even have to polish it. The kids take care of that for us. There are seven murals throughout the city, and the most recent, the Love Sculpture on the waterfront, and the First Amendment Tribute that's on the library stairs. All of these have been created by Portsmouth artists and have been funded by grants and private donations. We have always asked our citizens for ideas to input into new projects. The Love Sculpture and the First Amendment Sculpture were ideas that were brought to our Board of Directors from residents. We are very fortunate to show you our next project tonight. It was brought to our board by Rebecca Laris. Rebecca is an Auburn University graduate of the School of Architecture with a degree in interior design. She, too, has served on many commissions in the city and in her private business, has done projects throughout the nation, including many right here on our High Street. Rebecca's going to make a small presentation about our sculpture, and if you could hold your questions until the end, we'd appreciate it, and we'll all get right back to you. Rebecca?
Thank you, Barbara. Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Dr. Patton, council members, and ladies and gentlemen. I'm not sure you can imagine how terrific it is for me to finally share with you what you see depicted in this model and on our board presentation photographs in front of you. This is a sculpture that I designed to be located in the center of the traffic circle at our Portsmouth Pavilion, Harbor Vista Apartments, and our own city hall. The ideas guiding my design are simple and forthright, and I don't have to tell anyone in here that Portsmouth has a maritime heritage like few other cities in America. And the idea of using stylized sailing ships in a sculpture that reflects our history seemed a good place to start. The next element of the design is that I based it on our own city logo. I actually took the logo and interconnected it with four logos in three dimensions, so to speak. Now, this connection and design is not only providing strength in the construction, but it also provides simple visual strength for the sculpture as well. And really, the finest result of simplicity sometimes is elegance, and I want to bring that elegance and grace to our city landscape with this sculpture. Underlying element in this sculpture is how it fits the site. It serves to unite the unique structures around it. It shares similar structural support elements with Portsmouth Pavilion. It's literally Harbor Vista's name, and our city hall will boldly be represented by our own logo. One of my last design concepts, but it's really just as important as acknowledging the heritage of our city, is the visual representation of a fresh and soaring new vision of Portsmouth under full sail, headed in new directions. I'll tell you a little bit about the construction. After careful consideration, the sculpture is to be built from white powder-coated aluminum. Numerous discussions with engineers have us leaning toward perforated... Numerous discussions with engineers have us leaning toward perforated aluminum. The sculpture is about 22 feet tall. It's about 20 feet wide, and it's fabricated locally. The sails of the sculpture are designed in segments, like actual sails, allowing for ease of installation and repairs in the field. The outside perimeter of the sails are anchored by the use of stainless steel turnbuckles and exposed footers, similar to those at Portsmouth Pavilion, of course, not on such a grand scale. Centrally, the sails are anchored into a concrete pad with footers, as is the center galvanized metal mast, so to speak. And while I'm on the subject of the mast, I want you to know that the sculpture has been purposely designed with space around the mast so that visual contact can be made by drivers on any side of the circle as they approach the traffic circle. For instance, if someone is pulling out of the city parking garage, a driver can see that traffic on the other side of the circle is coming out of there. Aesthetically compatible bollards will be located around the perimeter. At night, the sculpture will really be exciting because we're using architectural-grade LED projectors. Lights will be strategically located, and they'll change with variations of rich, white light. One photograph of the sculpture on the table shows another and unusual, interesting way to view it, and that's from the top, and it'll be seen that way from City Hall and from Harbor Vista. And as you can also see in the same photograph, we plan to include an inner perimeter brick sidewalk that's embedded with engraved granite markers. And yes, those are the same granite markers that you see going up and down our downtown as we speak with our granite square marker project. Only ours are going to be marked to provide recognition of the funding of the sculpture. Folks, I am honestly so honored to be part of this project, and I'm waiving any design fee or project management fee in hopes that I can navigate this sculpture into Portsmouth soon. But as they say, wait, there's more, because Barbara has one more exciting and extremely important bit of information for you regarding the sculpture, and I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. As you can imagine and endeavor, this large is the biggest thing we've ever thought about doing, and it has a very significant budget, approximately $100,000. The good news is, oh, I've got to take my glasses off to see the expressions on this one, we're not asking you for money. We are very proud to announce that this project, that Support Portsmouth Public Art, will be working with a partner on this project, a partner who shares our enthusiasm and has already improved the beauty of the landscape in Portsmouth with the beautiful Harbor Vista Apartments located on the circle across from City Hall. With us tonight is the Chief Operating Officer of that company, Tim Faulkner, representing the Breeden Company of Virginia Beach. The Breeden Company has made the commitment to continue their allegiance to Portsmouth by giving us $100,000. Doesn't get any better. To completely fund our project, and we want to thank them from the bottom of our hearts, their dedication to Portsmouth is welcomed with open arms, and we look forward to their future investments in our city. Tim, would you like to say a few words?
Mayor, city council, we are honored to be able to participate at the council. Soon, the process is, the council has approved the sculpture going in the circle, but you have come a long ways in designing something that is extremely impressive. Mr. Breeden has seen the art all over the world, and Rebecca and Barbara came over and gave a presentation, and he was so impressed that he said, "This is what we need in Portsmouth. You need to take it to another level." We think that Harbor Vista, you know, we're so proud of that facility. We are so proud to be in Portsmouth. And as Mr. Shamin pointed out, he says Portsmouth is a diamond in the rough and has the future ahead of it. Mr. Breeden is a believer in that, and we think the sculpture represents that belief and there is very positive future over in Portsmouth. So we are very pleased to partner with Barbara and Rebecca if we go forward on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any questions?
Colleagues.
Again, we'd like to thank you for our time. We'd also like you to allow, for allowing SBPA to place public art in other public places, as in the Toad, the Love Sculpture, and the First Amendment. I, too, have a tribe with me tonight, my Board of Directors. And would you please just stand, wave a hand, just to show everybody that we, too, are a nonprofit volunteer organization who are so excited right now, we just about can't stand it. But our question to you is, may Support Portsmouth Public Art have permission to place this beautiful sculpture in the circle?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Patton?
Yes, sir.
What are our next steps on this project? And how can we answer that question?
Yes.
Just say yes? Is that the answer? Just do it?
No, wait. I just, I was, this team has worked diligently, and as Ms. Vincent said, over a year, one of the things when they came, I shared with them that I wanted to make sure they are engaged more than just City Hall, and they have gone out and met with not only others, as you know, but with the new tenants in the Breidens' residence. And so I say we have nothing else to do but city council. It's a funded project. I tried to make the space beautiful through some flowers out there, but I think this would be much more beautiful and a centerpiece at no cost to the city. So, Mayor, members of council, it's in your hands.
And what do you recommend?
Oh, I think, I recommend that, I recommend that we move forward.
Is there any water?
No.
We, we promise you, Ms. Emmes, that we will design a water sculpture somewhere for you.
Yeah, but this has no water.
And we also promised the other people who, that wanted to light this with all kinds of, different kinds of lights, that we will try to design a sculpture for them, too. All we need are ideas and people to bring them to us.
Madam Clerk, the chair's going to entertain a motion to approve, and so...
Mr. Baldwin, is there anything?
Yes, please.
Is there anything we need to know before we...
I don't want to get up and, you know, be Mr. Negative or anything. No, you can't. No, I just mentioned this is in the right-of-way, and you will need a right-of-way permit from engineering.
Yeah, we have to do that.
That's the only thing.
You have to follow the procedure.
We need to have you to talk to.
Also, before we actually vote on it, can we allow for the public to have input and then vote at the meeting following that input?
Sure.
What do you mean, at a public, at a meeting?
Let's rephrase. Will you hold some type of public meeting on this to allow public input, and then after that, bring the matter back to city council?
What I was suggesting was that it would be at one of our city council meetings, like we would do a...
Okay, that's even better. That's good.
Okay, I have a suggestion.
Go ahead.
Can, like we do proclamations at the beginning of council meetings that's sometimes not advertised on the agenda, can we ask these fine women to do exactly what they just did tomorrow night as part of our meeting, so it, again, goes out to the public and can see it, and those who are in attendance can see it, and then take a vote, and that'll give two weeks before we meet again, I guess, before we meet again at another meeting, and at that time, we can entertain a motion.
Second reading.
And certainly, if people have comments, they're going to reach out to us.
All right, so let me restate what you...
Is that what you're trying to say?
Well, I would say before we actually took a vote to let, get the public to buy into it, and then we'll vote after that.
How about this? Have a presentation tomorrow evening with a hearing at the first meeting in July with a vote after the hearing. Is that agreeable to everybody? That way, the public sees it twice.
I think that's what I was saying.
That's July 10.
The following meeting.
Yes, yes, July 10.
And so what happens is that we get a chance to have you make your presentation tomorrow evening, where the public then can get, see it. We'll do another presentation by you at the, right at the start of the public hearing. We'll have a public hearing, we'll take public comments, and if we're ready, we'll vote...
July 10, if you're ready.
We will vote on this.
Right, July 10.
Okay. And that allows two public displays and one public hearing. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
Sure.
You're good.
Okay. All right. Can you all be there tomorrow night to give the same presentation?
Get busy.
I can be there tomorrow night.
I can, too.
All right. Good, we've got it.
Thank you, colleagues, for coming up with a plan that allows for citizen input. And it's a good process? Everybody in agreement with it?
Yeah, we're going to have you first, so you're not going to sit around all night. You'll...
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's called a special presentation.
Yes, we'll make it work.
We'll make it work.
Sorry, Debra.
And then I'll leave it to you all, and let's put a notice in the paper about the public hearing then.
We will. We will. Okay, Mayor, vice members, members of council, this concludes our presentations for this evening.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
If the city manager can, tomorrow, there was, there was a publication in the currents about, I think, two Sundays ago pertaining to some community development, block grant reimbursements, back to hood. If we could get an update on that, it was, it has a July 5 date that was in the currents to report back the planning, I believe, any comments on that, but it pertained to some properties.
Let me see what you're talking about.
Yeah. I just, just wanted to get some clarification on that matter, but I believe it was about two weeks ago it was in the currents.
We'll come back with an update for you all tomorrow.
If you have.
Right. I'll give Mr. Kramer and Mr. Baldwin, and we'll give an update on it tomorrow.
Can you do that tomorrow in the work session? Is that two?
If I, if I may, Mayor, can I ask Mr. Baldwin to step forward, please? Would Mr. Kramer be a better...
I'm just trying to see what you're talking about here.
That's, I'm not aware.
Yes.
Is this PRJ?
Yeah, I think, yeah, these are related to...
PRJ.
Some of the CDBG properties. We'll need to get back to a report. We're in a couple of different locations here.
Right.
All right. Let's put this on the work session and give a report on what you know as of tomorrow evening.
Okay.
And invite the executive director, the interim executive director, DP.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll get it.
Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
And also, can we get an update on the SIPSA situation?
Yes, we'll give you where we are.
Any other items?
You get that.
All right, well, thank you very much to my dear participation. A very productive meeting, and the meeting is adjourned tomorrow night.